To the flag.
In the states of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Anyone like to make any public comments? This would be the time. Okay. We have some minutes to accept. Motion that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2018 as shown. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. You have any discussion on the April 3rd minutes? No? All those in favor? Thank you. Tonight we have correspondence items A through H. The motion that we move to accept the list of correspondences as shown A through H. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any conversation about correspondence items A through H tonight? No? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the correspondence? So Becky, the consent, we're gonna...
It's good.
It's good. It's been done, okay.
Thanks.
Alright, so we have two item consent agenda, A and B. Move to approve the consent items A and B as shown. A second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions about the A and B consent agenda?
You just including the outdoor seating one because they emailed us, not because we're approving anything right now. You want to stand that, right?
The what?
We're not approving anything for outdoor seating.
No, we're just approving that... We're just approving that... We haven't approved the licenses.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. I want to stand that.
I would be approving that.
Do we approve the license? No, the licenses aren't done yet, are they?
So the consent agenda item for outdoor seating does not involve alcohol. And it's on consent because it was approved last year for the same location.
So they had to rewrite the verbiage, right?
That has to do with the ones with alcohol.
Okay.
Yeah, so can we confirm that, that issue? Last time we put things on, is that only going to apply for outdoor alcohol? Not outdoor seating per se?
Correct.
Ultimately, that's your decision.
Yeah, I don't think that was the intention I had anyways.
The previous year, we didn't have any fees for this. And when we changed it to include the alcohol, that was when the fee discussion started.
Yeah. I don't know if you guys do, because I thought when we approved it last time, it was just for alcohol, outdoor seating. So I don't care what direction we go, as long as we...
The outdoor seating was only for alcohol?
That was my thought when we voted on it, but I don't care which direction we go in, as long as there's clarity.
I think you're somewhat similar to me.
So what do we do next on that?
So I was just clarifying what that consent agenda item was. You're not actually voting for one of the alcohol licenses on that one.
Yeah. We're just basically approving what we... reapproving what we approved last year.
That's what that request is for.
Okay, devil's advocate. So what's to stop any other establishment now from sending a letter in to Becky to post on consent agenda for outdoor seating?
Because if they haven't had it in the past...
If they haven't had it in the past, it'd be an agenda, an actual agenda item.
Like number seven.
Okay, can we clarify that if we're gonna do this next time? Make sure we say that this is a re... Because I don't see that... I know that they're saying, in Laura's email, she's saying it's that time of year again. But I mean...
Anything... You often see this for like routine parade permits and things that are approved from previous years, and we put them in consent. But we could've done a better job of explaining that, given that there's some on the same agenda that aren't consent.
So... But to the more important point, I think, although Terrence's point is important.
Well, it's more important than yours.
With the... The issue relative to what we voted on last meeting, is everybody on board that that has to do only with alcohol? Was that... Was that the intent, or was the intent for any outdoor seating? You know, what was the intent of the board? Because I thought it was alcohol, and now, you know, I wasn't sure if it was either/or, because I think there might have been some questions in the... in the public as well about what that was. And...
There's two different... There's one for seating, and there's one for alcohol with seating.
So...
But a new license, a new license first time through, regardless of whether it's alcohol with seating or just seating, still needs approval.
Agreed. That I agree with. My issue is...
Is it feeless?
Is serendipity gonna have to pay a hundred bucks because they are an outdoor seating, but they don't have alcohol?
Well, and I think also to that point, there's... I don't want to like call out businesses, but there's some businesses that leave their outdoor seating out year-round that I don't think have ever come in front of us. So just for consistency, what's our policy gonna be for cafes?
So the only one I'm aware of like that is the Bean House. There may be others, but the Bean House owns the land where their outdoor seating is, so we can't regulate that. There may be other exceptions.
Well, Bean House doesn't own it. The owner of that establishment owns it, right?
It's not town... They're not putting it on town sidewalk. They're putting it on private sidewalk.
Okay.
Whoever owns it.
I think Frank Durkis has some property in the back that he has used before too, that he owns.
And that's under his liquor license. That patio in the back is under his...
We just added it. We added that within the last year or two, yeah.
We should just probably be sure... I mean, I'm... I think you know I'm for eating outside, having outdoor space, but it can't be that anybody just shows up and suddenly they have the right to do this without checking in. So there's gotta be some sort of process on how this actually goes forward. Whether it's alcohol, that's a different story.
Well, Article seven, or Agenda Item seven, is an example of that. It's another outdoor seating request. We have not seen it before, and it does not involve alcohol. Okay? So we could've done a better job of explaining the consent item as being different than the others.
Right.
Alright. We're on the same page now, I think.
Sure.
Obviously.
Alright, so all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Gracias. It's a Spanish version for the folks in the room. Takes a one-day liquor license. Need to vote a selectman. Motion before us that we move to accept and approve the one-day liquor license to sell beer and wine hosted by the Maynard Cultural Council at Celia T's Dance Hall, Water Summer Street, on Monday, April 30th, 2018, from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM. That's it. So this is... I mean, I know we have it in front of us, so... Anybody have any questions or concerns? Who's... Who's doing the tips?
Tim and I have both completed the tips training, same as last year. If you remember, we had an event that was similar last year that we did for as well.
Was that in the theater?
Yeah. It was last year in the theater. We moved it to Celia T's. The theater didn't allow for good flow of people up and down, so we wanted a new venue for this.
They must've been disappointed you didn't choose them again.
And again, if it wasn't anything to do with the hospitality of Fine Arts Theater, it was just the... The nature of the theater was not set up to do the sort of up-and-down presentation that we like to do at this event, so...
Of course, this is like Hollywood.
What's that?
It's like Hollywood.
Right.
It was good, though. It was...
It was good. Tim tripped.
Yes. Yes.
Have you recovered from that?
That's what they all remember, Tim.
Yeah. That's right.
Jennifer Lawrence' mod, David's memory.
That's gonna be a problem again with the stage. We'll figure that out.
Alright, do you guys have any other questions about the event or anything? I mean, how many are they up to now? Celia T's, three. They started over, right? So two.
They get to have thirty a year.
Yeah, so have at it. But, I don't know. Anybody have any other questions? No? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Thanks, Mr. Eric.
Thanks, David. I didn't write that. Outdoor seating, Maynard Pizza House. Is there anyone from Maynard Pizza House here?
Our folks, Maria Nunes, is not here, so I guess we'll have him at the next meeting.
We have a discussion if they're not here.
Probably tell someone to get up. Maybe we should get down to the pizza place.
Call him up.
Ask for delivery.
Alright, so we'll just...
You deliver it while you're here, just...
You want to table that in case they arrive later, or just put them on?
Well, we'll just hold off on it. If they're not here, it'll be... We'll just consider it canceled, you know, just delayed. They're not present. Alright, next is the budget discussion. Discussion with the school committee is part of that as well.
I'm on a solo tonight, you guys.
All by yourselves?
Aw, dear. So be kind.
You be kind!
I'm always kind.
Two rows back.
Yep. Two rows back, notice.
Be brave, be brave.
Aren't you guys tired of us yet? Yes.
Oh, we are.
So, um, this request was prompted by a note that I had sent to Andrew. Just, as you know, we're gonna be starting the difficult...
Sit next to her, just for like...
Decisions.
There you go.
Um, the difficult discussions about cutting of positions and that, to make up for the differential between the 5.14% and 7.29%, it comes out to about 466,000. So last week at the school committee meeting, we had a lot of teachers there that were asking us to please give them specifics about how we were gonna make these cuts, who was gonna be cut and that. And we mentioned to them that we really wanted to come before you guys and hopefully get some advice from you as to if and how much of the health insurance savings, if there is any of that, that could potentially come to us, hopefully. And then I know that we had talked about chapter 70 funds that are out of everybody's control at this moment, so we'll have to work on that later. But... But that's really the reason for coming before you, just to see... Because Andrew had mentioned that you were gonna be making that decision tonight on how those... that savings was gonna be allocated. So we just, again, are imploring you to please consider us with as much of it as you can...
We're only making that decision because you're here.
That would be why we're here.
Which I gather.
Thank you, Chairman.
So... Don't make me grab my gather. Alright, so Andrew, for my... My only question is, we have these... Do we have the sheet in front of us? Where are we? And it's... Is that number still good, the number you gave us last week?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could have it put up on the screen. This will be the health insurance number.
Sure.
That's why I was running to the back of the room to help with the audience. You may or may not be able to see that, but those are real numbers up there. We reviewed this last meeting, and the column with the green lettering in it is the one that you should be focusing on. The rest of it's just a lot of detail about how we pay for health insurance. But the bottom line, bottom right corner, it says 227,411, I believe. And that is the amount that's available from the savings from the change we made in the health insurance. And where that came from was we budgeted for just a little less than 10% increase. That was the recommendation we received from our insurer. The actual increase came in around 6%. We have qualified for an additional 1.6% discount because of something called Post-65, which none of us have enough time to discuss tonight. However, it did add another $80,000 to the mix. When you take all those numbers down, that's what those boxes in the lower left are telling you. You get the net available on the bottom right, 227,411. So that's the money that we budgeted for in February, which we no longer believe we need for health insurance. And I'm doing a six-hour workshop on this another day this week, if anybody really wants to know. There's another chart I'd like to show, Mr. Chairman, if that's alright. And this is something I've shared with the selectmen previously, which are town priorities for money. Similar to the school's request, the town had about a half a million dollars in requests going into the budget year that were not supported in the February 10th budget. Here's a long list of them. Prioritize the numbers at the top are the ones that the town administration feels are the most important, and it's that whole group with the black box, the thick black box around it. You'll notice several of them have zero dollars next to them. The reason for that is that we found alternative sources to pay for some of these things. Not that we've decided we don't need them, but for instance, opening the library for an additional three hours. The library trustees have voted to fund that for the first year, to sort of pilot it. And then if it is successful, as they hope, they can make a more formal, permanent budget request in the future. So there's a number of examples like that where we've been able to come up. The total of those zeros was originally $68,000. So that's how much money we've been able to find by being creative and looking in the couch cushions. The numbers above that, which you see the total there is 125,000, are things that the town administration would like to fund for fiscal 19. And below that are lower priorities. If we had even more money, we would be very happy to make arguments for lots of other types of funding, but I didn't feel it was prudent to put forth any further beyond that first grouping.
Thank you. Two pages, or... One's for Cheryl.
Yeah, I have it already, so...
Can you ask a question about those things on that one?
Sure.
Are any of those... I see like one of them, some say restore, so they look like things we've had in the past that we'd like to get back, but are... Are a number of them new things that we're looking to add? And they're not cutting from services we have now.
It's a mix of both, Mary. In the... In the left column, you see the department that made the request. The second column tells you whether it's a cut from fiscal 18 or a new request for fiscal 19. And so that very first one, for instance, is restoring a cut budget. The detail behind that is that the tree maintenance budget, the DPW believes that if they spend that money in fiscal 19, similar to our pavement improvement plan where we analyze all of our roads and decide what the priorities are, most of that tree maintenance budget will go towards an analysis of our needs, tree maintenance, and then leaving it in the budget permanently will give us the money to actually do the tree maintenance moving forward. So it's not 100% of that is for the survey, but most of it is, and the rest for the actual maintenance.
And could you explain what in the recreation, the second line down, creating a new staff and marketing position?
Sure. So this came out of the Recreation Commission. It's the second year we've requested this. It's believed that if we develop our recreation programs properly, it'll be self-sustaining. But we need to sort of put our foot forward to create those programs that then are self-sustaining. And so the... It says create a staff and marketing. It's intended to be a part-time position, and then also the cost to market, and then bring in the dollars that come from recreation programs.
So is this what was underneath the Boys and Girls Club prior, right? They had sort of taken all of this over, and now it's being separated again?
In theory, yeah. The Boys and Girls Club program was never this much money or volume of... Or vision of a volume of business.
Yeah, I don't really have all day for all this.
Excuse me?
We don't have all day for this, because...
Sorry.
Because we've discussed it individually, and I don't have anybody calling me at home, sending me emails, stopping me on the street, or writing me nasty letters about tree cutting or any of those other services. But I do have those things from the parents in town, and some teachers in town, some administrators in town, so, you know, it's a need. The schools are in need. We've talked about it. We talked about it last year. So I'm personally gonna suggest that the full amount of 227,411 go to the schools this year, and that would be my suggestion, and I don't know what anyone else's suggestion is, but we've talked about it, and I think that the board, you know, for the most part will feel the same way.
Can you make a motion, Mr. Chairman? I would second that, and go for it as well.
I would support it as well.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess I'll make a motion. Alright, I'll make a motion that the savings realized in insurance health cost projections for the fiscal year 2019, any savings realized in that account be directed to the Maynard Public Schools in fiscal 2019.
Second.
Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I think you're gonna need to put a specific number on that.
Okay, so well, so as of today, the specific number is 227,411. Thank you.
I still second it.
Second. Discussion? Conversation? Vote? Own favor?
Thank you very, very much.
Peace.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Shouldn't he just leave?
I'm sorry. I was gonna say...
Well, so he can move the rest of the...
At least my wife and kids hang around and do the... At least my wife and kids hang around and do the dishes. Alright, so...
Still here. We're staying. I'm staying.
Alright, good, okay. You might need a pillow, it's gonna be boring. Alright, beep grants. Who's speaking for the beep grants tonight?
First one is Mr. Swamburgh.
Okay.
Let me give you this. Everyone else got it. This is selection of the finalists.
Okay. Oh, it wasn't here that week, right? That's right. I did get it on film.
Oh, you missed those, that's right.
I got it on video.
I got it very nice.
I think I lost Betty's tape, Becky's disc, but I'll find it. Don't worry. Alright, so anyways, we do have a motion, so I'll read the motion, and then we'll have the discussion, okay? And the motion is that we move to approve the beep application to fund Maynard as a canvas and to authorize the acting town administrator to review and approve the expenditure of funds up to $25,000 from the Downtown Enhancement Fund for the submitted beep application for Maynard Cultural Council at 7 Walltham Street, the Murphy and Snyder Building. By the way, I just want to say thank you guys, because I did see it last week. I did get a chance to actually look at the disc and watch the last meeting, and I appreciate the... You know, all the information and work that went into providing us with the information last time. So there's really no need to catch up, but I appreciate it, so thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Gracias. Discussion?
Have you guys made a final vote yet?
No, we were waiting for the funding for this vote before we impaneled the jury again to make that final vote. So once... If you approve us, we will send the final packet of information out to the jurors and convene them over the next week to make that final vote.
That's the backside of that building.
Okay, alright.
I think mural two is on Duncan Donut's building.
Okay.
From Duncan Donut's side.
Alright, okay, sure. So when do you guys decide?
Once... Once I just explained to Melissa that once, if you approve us, we will send that, the final packet of information on each of the finalist murals to the jury, and we hope to make the final vote over the next week, so that we can announce the final winner at the award show, which will be on the 30th.
Yeah, part of that, the other end?
The 30th is what you just approved, the one-day liquor license.
So the awarding of the murals themselves are gonna be part of the 30th?
The announcement of the finalists, yes. Yeah, we'll be part of those events.
I might have to go.
We hope so.
I did have fun last year.
We hope you all show up.
Tim's a good bartender.
He's not tripping. That's a whole different story. Alright, so...
At the climax stage.
So we have that one, yeah. Can either drink or be a bartender. Can't be both. Town law, I think. It's an ordinance. Alright, so does anybody... Do you... Anybody have any questions for these gentlemen about the first beep grant?
It was a very, very thorough presentation last night.
Yeah.
That you missed.
I'm sorry. A little cranny, but I'm sorry. Katie did a good job. Alright, so all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
No pressure, Eric.
No pressure, Eric. I know where you live.
You do, huh?
This second round of voting is gonna be a little easier than the first. I'm not gonna have to visit your house.
Exactly. Very easy.
Okay.
David, you're supposed to let me know when you're on my street. We had an agreement there.
I came at night.
Alright. My sentries were sleeping.
Parking signage. Who's got parking signage? You guys have both the next two?
Both the next two.
Parking signage. Subject B, parking signage. The motion is that we move to approve $15,000 from available downtown enhancement funds for the purchase and installation of 10 signs for the downtown parking areas to authorize the acting town administrator to review and approve the expenditure of funds up to $15,000 from the Downtown Enhancement Fund for the submitted beep application from the Economic Development Committee. Okay? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Alright. Who's talking?
Well, go back a little bit, and in November of 2016, we had invited a whole bunch of merchants to come in and talk to us about how we could improve the downtown area. And so they gave us a list of things that they felt would be an improvement, and wayfinding was one of the major topics. And so as part of that, we've tried to come up with a grand theme, and as you know, we've done the maps, and we have locations on the maps for the different parking areas and things. So we've now taken this to the next step here, and looked at our signage, and so we have several parking signs around town now, but they don't really tell you from all directions. So what we want to do is add a few more signs that would orient people towards the various different parking lots that we have. In addition to that, what we wanted to do is take the existing signs and put a little plaque below them with the same letter combinations that are on the map, so any pedestrian who is looking to understand where the parking is, they can understand that by the signage. So this is a grant that... Or this is a request for the beep grant that would give us signage that looks the same as what we currently have, so there would be consistency there, and it would have the same thing. We have got a quotation from the people that did the original signs, and they would add the little plackets below that. In line with this, the next thing that we're gonna be asking is the kiosk, which is part of the same thought process. So when people come in, and especially important for the rail trail, is that we want to be able to get people to see the maps and see the downtown area and where they can go. So as they... They come in from the...[1701.91] So, as they come in from the, into the parking lot, they'll see a key lot, kiosk, and they'll know where to go in downtown, or if they come in on the rail trail, the same kind of thing. So, it is a, kind of a big picture view that takes the maps, the parking signage, and the kiosks, and really tries to focus on getting people downtown. And the concept is, if we can make the downtown more vibrant, which is part of what you folks did here with the seating, with the restaurants and things, which was another recommendation, we're hoping that we can add value down there, and as you know, we're approaching the levy ceiling in town, and so, if we can add value downtown, that's going to give us a better position tax-wise for the future. And so, that's our goal.
Okay. So, Andrew, if we improve these three beeps tonight, what does that leave us, the beep funds?
So, it does leave about a little less than $50,000 on the private side, and pretty much wipes out the town side. I believe it's down to about $15,000.
So, are we still using meter money to replenish the beep funds as a revenue source?
That's subject to appropriation by the board.
Okay. I think these are all great projects, and I've been supportive of the Economic Development Committee. I'm just worried about us depleting those funds and what's reserved in our beep funds faster than we're replenishing. So, are there any plans in the pipeline for how we can keep this fund going, so future businesses in downtown enhancement can be maintained?
Well, I think, again, I guess that would be subject to appropriation from the parking fund.
Right. The funds have never come from some other third party in that sense, but the amount of money we're collecting in the meters and through ticketing that was used in the past is down from its peak. Right now, it's around $37,000 a year. Its peak was about $50,000 back about 10 years ago. When I say peak, the computerized records we have go back about 15 years. I'm not going until the last century, because I don't have the, I don't have the time to count manually.
Yeah, I just, I.
Past decade or so, it's been $40,000.
I know other downtowns do like a downtown enhancement fee to businesses. Is that something that we'd ever consider, be able to sustain?
I think, I think we're in a difficult position for that, you know, where it's, other towns, in different circumstances, sometimes they'll create a business improvement district or a self taxing mechanism. Probably was not something that the town would be interested in entertaining in the near future. That's part of the reason we've tried to leverage some of the beep funds to do some of these public improvement projects. If you recall also, the beep is split currently, so that half of the, half, roughly half, have to be spent in the public domain anyway.
Right.
So, in this case, we're taking existing projects and the wayfinding and building on what's already been done there. So, we're really just building upon it and then creating the new, the kiosk, which is a new concept for wayfinding, and trying to create more of an atmosphere along the lines of the Barringer Report, you recall a couple of years ago, where the downtown becomes a easily navigatable destination, particularly for people that aren't from here. And that's why I think the parking is so key. I think that's why Dick and the committee have done a great job.
Excuse me for interrupting. I appreciate Melissa's comments, but, you know, I think in Maynard, many of our small businesses downtown are working on a very thin margin, and the more we stress them with the requests for things like this, probably the less beneficial it is in the long run to us. That's just my thought process. They're not, most of our downtown businesses are not booming, you know, metropolitan-type businesses. And we saw that when things happened, and there might have been other issues, but with lease changes and things like that, that affect businesses like that. So, even a small little request could be impactful on the small businesses that we have downtown. But overall, I want to comment on this particular request, and I think you spoke to both of them at the time, so. But my comment is really towards the signage, which I think is important, because I think that it helps, you know, visitors to our community, and I think that's, it's a good idea. What I do think we have downtown, though, is some sign pollution, that there might be too many signs. And I think when one of our consultants came in and spoke to us, they talked about that, and they actually showed us some indications where some of our signs were counterintuitive, where it said, "Go this way," and "Go that way," and it was sort of like, you know.
Yes.
Wizard of Oz-type stuff. And it's, so, maybe when we're doing this and putting up new signage, we can also address some of those signs that are duplicative, duplicit, whatever the word is.
Yeah.
Double.
Yes, yes.
And sort of clean it up, so that we have less signage, you know, because I think signs all over the place can cause some issues. That's my only observation, but the, I support the proposal and the kiosks, probably a little less so, but I understand the importance of it and how it can work for our benefit. I just hope that things, and I express this concern with the map, that I hope it's updated, so that, you know, things are fresh and new, and because people don't look at things if it's the same thing that they saw, you know, three years ago, they're not going to look at it again, so then it becomes waste. So, we have to be, it's like a Facebook page. If you don't change it, nobody looks at it.
Of course. Absolutely right. Understood, understood.
And we have had a second printing on the maps, and we do have that out. The kiosk that we currently have as part of the rail trail, which isn't even open yet, has been replenished numerous times, because the people are taking.
Right, yeah, I realize that. My concern was that changing.
And so, what we want to do is get the folks coming from the other direction now.
Yeah.
Get them downtown.
My concern at the time was when, if businesses left, we didn't have old maps that had businesses that haven't been here.
Yeah.
And since you're replenishing that, I assume that that changes along with it.
Right. And we're trying to keep current on that.
Yeah.
And we have addressed the sign pollution a little bit in this. Part of this, we have spoken with Aaron about how we can combine some signs and do some things, so that it isn't so onerous, and it is more informative. And we're looking at how signs tend to shadow each other, and so, we've separated them a little bit, so they're easier to read and things. And so, that is part of this project.
Good. Thank you.
Also, I wasn't proposing taxing the businesses. I was really thinking of more of a tax mechanism for the building owners, because I think part of the problem that I have with the beep application process is that our business owners are tenants in these properties, and they're putting up at least 50% of their funds, the town's matching them, and it's improving the actual structure that these business owners are going to benefit from, not the business owners, but the property owners are going to benefit from, and they aren't putting any skin in the game. And I thought if there was another way we could get money out of them, or, you know, incentivize them to rent their vacant storefronts and make more of an, you know, a revenue source for the town while benefiting the tenants in there as well, it could be a win-win.
Interesting. So, we've actually have this on an agenda item in our EDC, and we have talked about it a little bit. We felt that this probably wasn't the time to do it, because they are struggling, to Dave's point, and we're hoping that some of these things that we can bring in there, we can look at sustaining funds down the road. But we see what we're doing now is really an investment in the future. And so, trying to get these things up and trying to get the businesses to be more vibrant, we have some projects going on that hopefully will bring more people into the downtown area. The zoning that was done some years ago, where apartments above and retail below, we're hoping will make the downtown more inviting in the evening. And so, we think, you know, probably four or five years out, we could talk about the kinds of things that you're speaking to, but right now, I think we need to do an investment and get that vitality first.
It's hard, because in each of these beeps for tonight, and as well as the outdoor seating, these are all helping, hopefully helping our businesses in improving the climate that Slatman and Gavon pointed out, and I think these are trying to build on what we have without, with recognizing limitations of it.
Okay, I was told to wrap it up, so someone's getting itchy. All right, anybody else? Parents, no? Nope, I'm good with it. So, parking signage, all those in favor? All right, move on to the next. I read a motion for the kiosk, public seating. Move to approve $11,000 for the purchase and installation of information kiosks and public seating to be installed in locations throughout the downtown. To authorize the acting town administrator to review and approve the expenditures of funds up to $11,000 from the downtown enhancement fund for the submitted beep application from Economic Development Committee. And I guess we've kind of had a discussion about it.
Second.
Okay, second.
Melissa can have it if she got it.
It's okay. She's doing the minutes, so. All right, so, I mean, does anybody have any conversation? We just kind of talked about these, and how are these benches going to be secured? Do we know?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
How are we going to secure the benches?
So, the benches, according to Aaron, there will be a concrete pad put down, and they'll be bolted to the pad.
Is that, is the pad part of the cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Similar to the ones on the rail trail, I assume.
Correct. The benches may not be that.
No, no, I get it, yeah. But the installation.
And the pricing in the quote doesn't show a pad. So, are we going to put the pad in, and then they're going to put the seats in?
So, we have labor in the quotation. These are all prefab things, and so, part of that labor content was what the DPW would be contributing. So, part of that $11,000 is to reimburse the DPW's budget, so, for their overtime that they'll have to do, to put, this is part of what they're doing.
Okay. And so.
And we think this is really an opportunity with the rail trail. The kiosks that are part of the rail trail have been used quite a bit, and we would like to get that kind of thing, and the same thing with the benches. It's a little, I won't call it a park, but the little green area there at Acton and Concord Streets is a natural place for people to turn around, and we would like them to continue on down into the downtown area. And so, that's why we have the benches, so they can rest, see the kiosk, and continue on downtown, get an ice cream, or a sandwich, or whatever.
I don't know, you have to sit there, you're not going to see anything but a lot of automobiles. Not much to see there. We better, we have to clean that up a little. But, that's another discussion for another day. All those in favor of the kiosks and seating?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good day, gentlemen.
So, if you're nice, you can sit next to me, and I'll go down and get your soda at Cumbie's when it's there. Don't worry.
You can stare at the mural.
Huh?
You can stare at the murals.
No, it's on the other end of town.
We can move murals up?
Oh, I guess.
Oh, all right.
Never know, there might be a mural up there someday.
Yeah, I see a nice, it's a nice place, right, right there for a mural.
146 Acton Street, proposal. This is a discussion. Good evening.
Hey, folks.
Hello.
My name's Mike Bonacanti. I'm the counsel for Maynard Properties, Maynard Industrial Properties Associates. So, I'm here to discuss a land swamp that some of you may or may not be aware of, to give you sort of a brief history of the land swamp. On or about 2011, the Conservation Commission and the Quarks, they're the owners of the building at 124 Acton, agreed to exchange a railroad easement, which I believe the town has already, but it abuts 27, runs towards Acton. So, in 2013, unfortunately, one of the trustees of MIPA died. Linda Hanson, the Conservation Commission, no longer worked for the Conservation Commission, and the land swap between the railroad easement, the two acres of land that abut 124 Acton, and the proposal to replace the conservation land that sits on the two acres, sort of died. So, I'm sort of, I'm here to revive it. Part of what MIPA did back in 2011 was get an appraisal done, and we're essentially waiting for the Conservation Commission to come up with a plan, so we can consummate the deal and move forward. But, for whatever reason, sort of died on the vine, and which brought me here today. The process of the swamp essentially is, you know, as you guys know, you need conservation land and replace it with a conservation land, which is where 18 Winter Street comes into play. So, it's a 12-acre parcel of land. I've got some shots of it as we're moving forward of the two acres and 18 Winter Street. The owner of 18 Winter Street is Fran Dennisuk, and she's willing to enter into agreement. I did provide Andrew with a letter for her to, assenting to being willing to enter into an agreement between us, the town, and furthermore, what's important, I think, in terms of this land swap is Article VII. So, the special town meeting that occurred back in, I forget the exact date, but October of 2012, I believe, and that provided you folks with the authority to assent to this transaction. And I've got a shot of that as well. So, we can flip through.
Let me see, one at a time?
12.
Yeah. Here we go, guys. So, that's the article. Unfortunately, it's not, it's a little bit difficult to read. But, you know, it is, it is stamped by the clerk. But essentially does say, you folks, you know, may enter an agreement with the other two parties. Then, so, the description of the area is, I can show you here. So, this is a shot, this is when the appraisal was done, back in 2011. I'm using some of the pictures from that appraisal. So, this is the parcel, the two acre, the front of it, and if you're familiar with 124 Acton, and if you look down, you know, along the building, that's the road along the building. This is a shot of the site from, there's apparently an easement that runs directly, or abuts this two acres that I'm describing, and that's a shot of that. And this is a shot of being on the two acres and looking down into, you know, towards 124 Acton. And then some, just some of the other shots here.
So, I've got a quick question for you.
Yep.
You're calling the address 146 Acton Street.
I, yeah, I didn't, I didn't create that part. I don't know where that came from.
That's definitely 124 Acton.
Yeah.
And what you're talking about is basically behind the building, that blue square right here.
Yeah, exactly.
It's really, that's Rockman Ave. on the other side of it, which is really.
Yeah, okay.
Rockman Ave. is at the top of the picture, right?
So, that is the Fusion Center at the bottom, I mean, not the Fusion Center, but the State Police Lab.
Yeah, yep.
Bottom of the picture.
Yeah, and the cable company.
I guess it is the Fusion Center. And did we talk about this land not that long ago?
Yes, we did. There was a letter that came to us about it.
Six or eight months ago, came through in the fall, late summer, I think.
There's walking trails all through there, there's conservation land in that area up there, there's water down to the left. Reason I know is because I'm the abut on the other side.
Yep. Gotcha. Are you familiar with it?
Yeah.
So, for, so then, this is the, you know, your zoning map. It shows that the gray is zoned industrial, and essentially, that's what we're going to use the land for. The idea is to expand our current space with, you know, it's going to be a building with, you know, probably a small amount of parking, used for, you know, research development, office space. Generally, what the current building at 124 is being used for now, it would be an extension of that use, in terms of office space and that type of thing.
Completely separate building, not connected, you're saying, right?
Not likely connected, separate building. So, yeah, the zoning map, we wouldn't need, you know, we'd use our own current access. It's not like we're going to need additional access, or something along those lines. And we do have a tenant there who's currently expressed a need and a want for the separate space, so it certainly would be something that we would put together in the very near future, which, you know, brings me to sort of the benefit to the town, which is the tax, you know, the tax benefit of having, you know, a building that's possibly valued at, you know, a million, million and a half, $2 million, and then using the current tax rate for commercial, which is $31.10, that would be the tax benefit to the town over time. And backtracking just a little bit in terms of describing 18 Winter Street, you're probably all familiar with it. It is close to one of your DEP buildings, which I think is the top left-hand corner, but that basically comprises the 12 acres right there.
It's a rail trail running across it from left to upper.
Yeah.
The DPW's in the upper right.
Yeah, DP.
That's the water right there, right?
Yep.
The river.
That's, that's the bridge, is that Ice House Landing to the top?
Yeah, right.
For those of us who know what Ice House Landing is.
Ice House Landing is just off the frame.
Yeah, okay. And so, currently, that prop, that parcel of land is owned by Mrs.
Dennisuk, yeah, Fran. It's through a trust, but yeah, essentially.
It seems that there's a third piece of property involved. Is there?
Well, the rail trail was, in terms of the original transaction set up in 2011, was the rail trail. The Quarks owned the rail trail, and they conveyed it to Mr. Fenton, who then gave it to the town.
Yep.
You know, didn't take any compensation for it, is my understanding.
Do we have current appraisals for both pieces of property?
No, that's part of what we're going to accomplish, you know, once, once we get through this part, and you guys, you know, are on board with moving forward, then we'd then we'd spend some money to, you know, move, move this project forward with a, you know, purchase and sale agreement, you know, and a set, and a setup of the transaction. So it benefits everybody in, in a way that they need to.
So at this stage, are you just seeking like an MOU that you can move on to the next?
Well, the, the Article Seven requires that we get authority from the Board of Selectmen, which is essentially what I'm requesting here today, is authority to, you know, you guys assenting or voting at some point about agreeing to enter into a contract and conveying the land and replacing it with, you know, this two acres, replacing it with the twelve acres. That's essentially what, you know, I'm here to discuss is the, the swap between the twelve acres at eighteen Tremma, or eighteen Tron, eighteen Winter and, and this, and the two acres.
Because hypothetically, I don't have an issue with it, but it seems hard to give you any kind of assent to that without even knowing if it's a comparable swap. Without current appraisals. I mean, that's just my thought.
You can't develop this land, you can't even get to most of this land. It's, it's locked. You're never gonna do anything with this land.
That land is locked.
Yeah.
Winter Street is locked, I think.
Yeah, there's a bridge. This here, this area here is a bridge and, you know.
Railroad bridge, I think it is.
Right.
Sort of abandoned, well, it is abandoned railroad bridge.
I'm not sure you can do much with it.
Yeah.
Without putting some money into it.
Yeah. I guess I'm losing the, currently the town owns the property over on Acton Street. And this is owned by this private Fran, whatever her last name.
Dennisuk, yep.
And, so Mrs. Dennisuk would then own the land over on Acton Street?
No, Ms. Dennisuk would sell her property at eighteen Winter Street.
Yeah.
And that would replace the two acres of conservation land.
You can't sell.
You can't sell.
Although getting conservation land.
Yes, yes, okay.
And the, and the attorney's client would pay that bill?
Got it.
The attorney's client would buy the land from Ms. Dennisuk?
From Ms. Dennisuk would get, I get it.
And then swap it with us.
She would get the money from your client, your client would then own, as a result of the swap, would own.
Right. Or said a little bit differently, we buy the two acres, use those funds to buy eighteen Winter.
Okay. I believe Concom, Concom has had a number of meetings on this, this property over the years.
Sure.
That's my recollection. I know that they have an interest from the town's perspective, at least that's my understanding. I am a bit concerned about, right now anyway, of, of the abutters along Rockland Ave.
Sure.
I don't know if they're here tonight.
No, they're not.
And they probably would want to at least be involved in hearing what's going on. I don't know if this process requires notification of them just to hear what's happening. Also, the little circle that's there, that Jimmy Fenton also built.
Marble Farms, yeah.
Marble Farms, those residents also should at least have an understanding of what's going on before suddenly they're hit with a commercial building.
Yeah, no, fair enough, yeah.
So that's one concern that I have about tonight, taking action tonight. But I'm not committing one way or another how I feel about the overall process. Yeah, see Marble Farms is, is the, you can see the abutting property right across, if you stood at the front door of the Fusion Center and looked up right there, where you're, right there.
Yeah, these are, these are the condos, this is a single-family home here.
Twenty-two Rockland, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. And then the, the, the building itself is just a pure, what you put up there for size is just a pure estimate, right? There's no.
Right.
No plans at this point.
None at this point, you know, it's gonna have to fit, fit the space.
Yeah.
And be appropriate for the space.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I gotta believe they have an idea of what they wanna put there, otherwise they wouldn't be going through this. So I, I mean, if you're gonna show us like the boundary of the line, you should at least have some sort of schematic of what you anticipate is gonna go there. Because I've heard a couple of things already and I live in the area. So I mean, let's just, in full disclosure, let's cut to the chase. Are there ideas about what they wanna put there?
Well.
In size?
They don't, we don't, we don't have any schem, we don't have any architectural plans to present at this point in time.
And you would, would you be increasing parking there as well, on that site?
Possib, likely, there would be some parking if there's a, a, a need for it. You know, my, my guess is that we couldn't build any higher than what the, the current building is, which I think is five, five or six stories. We couldn't get higher than that.
By the way, that, that piece of land goes up on a slope, right?
Yeah, by thirty feet is the, is the estimate.
So.
Yeah, we don't have any, we don't have any schematics at this point in time to provide to you.
Well, it would behoove you to get some, I'm pretty sure that people are gonna wanna see them. I have a question for you, Andrew, and if you could do a little bit of research, it would be, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
What's the status of the folks who own this, this property now, Quarks, with regard to paying their taxes on time? Are they up to date with their taxes and what is their past review? Because I know in the past that they have been, I don't say they, because it may not be your client now, but in the past, the previous owner of that property, okay, has been in arrears and taxes year after year after year. And we've always had to chase them. So to me, that's not really a good community steward, for one. So if we're gonna look at all this with regard to making a swap to make it advantageous for these folks, then maybe we should see, you know, exactly what it is in their history they actually provide to the town, besides just being a landowner and a, a property owner. I don't wanna act on urban legend, but I'm pretty confident that, that I know they've been in arrears for a while. Maybe the, maybe the relatives of the current property owners are not in the same ballgame, but.
We'll get to the history and the current status.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm almost certain that they're, they're up to date.
And I wanna confirm, the area that's surrounded by the, is, the blue area.
Yeah, that, that, that was in 2011, that was what was discussed.
Yeah, I remember the, the conversation at the time. That's currently zoned industrial?
In, in your zoning map, that would be in, that, that could be, that, that's in the industrial zoned area. Now it's, it's conservation land.
Yeah.
But it could.
The, have we had, and I'm, you probably haven't, but just another thought process.
Yep.
There, there are wells for the town nearby. I'm not a hydroelectric engineer or whatever, hydrology or whatever. But I'm just wondering if there would be any impact on the water flow into those wells? Any different from what we currently have there, if there was additional parking and traffic and whatever type of?
Yep. Well, it's something we can.
I don't wanna impact our wells, our well water, that's.
Yep. Because I think there's a water station that's.
There is.
You can't see it here, but it's not that far from there.
Correct.
It's also not a current picture. I mean, it's not even close to being a current picture.
I think it's, it's a generally accurate representation.
Those haven't been there for quite a while. There's a building, an old building in the back towards the right of that, right there. So it's, it's, an updated photo would be better, because who knows what the landscape actually even looks like nowadays from up above, right?
I, I don't think it's changed all that much. I think there's some, some slight changes relative to the abutters. You know, I think there's additional condos put up in that fifty-five plus. But I think the house itself is, is relatively the same. I don't think that's changed all that much, but, you know, we're getting a new appraisal and move forward with this, we can certainly obviously provide additional information that you have questions on.
Fair enough.
Andrew, do we know if the most, the article from the 2011 special town meeting, is property specific, land specific? Are these two, the same two parcels that were being discussed at that time?
No, it is not. The, so the legislature has approved the disposal, the sale of up to two acres. I think it's two point oh seven, in the way it's written. Acres of that land, I believe that's an eight or nine acre parcel.
My recollection.
We could make it be a little bit wider and longer or a little bit narrower.
My recollection is the town meeting vote was out towards Crow Island and that general area, if, was where the land was.
Well, I'm speaking about this piece here. This is the piece to be conveyed by the legislature.
So.
But it, it doesn't have to be that exact blue line that's there. It could be a little wider, a little narrower, but it's two point oh seven acres in exchange for conservation land of equal value. It doesn't have to be eighteen Winter Street.
Okay.
Can you, can we get a, a picture? It's a little wider, a little wider than that, that kinda shows us the whole area and shows us in its entirety what the town owns of that, in that area? For, for space?
We could call up the, a Google Earth shot in a moment or two if you'd like.
I just tried doing that.
Mike, I don't know if you have different shots.
But does it tell what, what the town owns?
I.
I'm just, I'm.
I don't, I don't wanna.
I don't either.
About a year, that's all I have, yeah.
So we're not, we're not gonna vote on this tonight, we're not gonna do anything on this tonight other than discuss it. So, you know, prior to the next time that we get together, it would be nice to know, as we look at this piece of property in its entirety, and then we look at the two acres, aside from those two acres, what else does the town of Maynard own in that general vicinity for conservation land or land in general?
We own most of it from there, past the water plant, the soccer fields, all the way back to the end of Rockland Ave where there's some private property.
I mean, you know, there's. I, I don't know what the, what other uses there could be for it, or what uses there could be for, for the town. But if we give up two acres, it has the potential to be something someday. For twelve acres, acres, it can almost never be anything but twelve empty acres. It's kinda, you know, I don't know. Seems like a, seems like a difficult trade to make considering, you know, land is so, in so short supply, conservation or otherwise.
What would the access to this be, by the way? Is you, would the access be through the parking lot that exists already?
Correct.
Yeah. So no access or no ingress egress from Rockland Ave?
Correct.
It doesn't go that far, yeah?
It's just, it's not necessary.
And does your, and if I violate anything, just tell me, does your client own the Fusion Center now?
Well, they own one twenty-four Acton Street.
They, they, so the, the State Police Lab, they own that?
That's correct. Yep. They own the building and that, they're a tenant.
So the, the image you see on the screen now shows the land that the chairman was just asking about. So where you see green trees across the center of that photo, past that red dot, all the way to the houses in the back, nearly all of that is town-owned. And then on the other side of Rockland Ave, to the top of the picture, Rockland Ave is that white line with the red dot on it. That is all town land as well, until you hit the Acton border, which intersects that image. It's all industrial zoned in that part of town. But it is all also designated as conservation land, if not otherwise used already.
So we would have to okay the swap and change the zoning?
We would not have to change the zoning. The zoning is, is industrial and that's the intended use according to the attorney.
That's right. So even if it's conservation land now, it's still zoned as, as industrial?
Conservation land is a, is a type of, of land, not a, not a zone. We have conservation land in probably in every zone in our town.
But without a swap, you can't do anything to the conservation land itself, if it's deemed conservation land.
Conservation land must remain, parkland must remain as park or conservation land unless it is swapped and you need the, the legislature's approval even to do that.
Okay.
Fine.
Whoa. Siri said fine too. I, I don't, I don't see, you know, what, what's the next step, Andrew? What do you think our next step is? What do you, what does, anyone, anyone else have any questions that they need answered?
Could it be more information than public input before we could make a decision personally?
Yeah, I would agree.
The conveyance of the land would require a public hearing. We're talking about notifying abutters and so on. That wasn't the intention of this meeting. It would be part of the future if you allowed it to move forward.
What would we, I'm guessing confused then, what would we be approving tonight?
I'll let Mike speak to it.
The approval would be that you would, that you're in agreement that we can move forward relative to taking the next steps, because it's gonna require us to start spending some money. So if we're gonna do that, we wanna make sure that, you know, we, we're gonna be able to work towards a, towards the end of, of, of making the land swap. So, I mean, it's the appraisal, it's the, you know, the, you know, some different requests we have here. Talking to the, getting, you know, sending out a list, the abutters list and notifying them, doing a different, you know, different public hearings relative to that and getting different input relative to, you know, hiring an architect, getting schematics relative to the building. I mean, there, there's some time and energy for the owner of one twenty-four Acton. So they wanna understand that you guys are, are willing and able to, you know, work with us. Because if it's a flat-out no, then it's, then it's a whole different ballgame.
I feel like it's hard to give you a flat-out yes or a flat-out no without having that information in front of us. I mean, usually that information comes first and then we assess it and decide if we wanna move forward. So I feel like your client's not willing to put any skin in the game without us giving like a preliminary yes. And I don't think that's really fair to put us in that position. You know, a lot of this information is new to most of us.
So what, what is it that you need to, 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 for us to put skin in the game?
I, I mean, to me, I'd wanna see schematics, I'd wanna see appraisals of all the properties and how they compare. And I think we'd need more time to digest it as a board and talk about it. I mean, this is really the first we're hearing about it tonight. There wasn't any materials given to us ahead of time before this meeting. So it's really hard to be put on the spot like this.
Okay.
Personally, I don't know how the rest of my board feels. I don't wanna speak for them.
In fairness, there's, I think for board members who've been here a couple of years at least, we've had emails come to us from some people on this. So I think we were aware that someone was contemplating this swap, but you probably weren't, weren't aware of that. But you're right, it was just commentary. It wasn't anything about, there was no pictures, diagrams, you know, plans. And again, you, my point is, hey, I have a vested interest, obviously, I live in the neighborhood. But at the same time, if it makes sense for the town, I'm for it. But I'm not gonna make a decision, you know, without seeing what you're trying to put there. And again, I go back to the fact that I, you, your client knows what they wanna put there, they're just not showing us right now, so. And if they don't, then, then, then why are we even having this conversation now about a land swap?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not sure about, they know what they're putting there at this point in time, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, then in my estimation, this would not, it's not important for the town then, right now. That's how I would vote.
Sure.
So if, if, it's to Selectmen Levine Perils, without skin in the game, without information back, why am I taking this serious then?
Right.
Why am I having this con, there's many other things, you, you were here for the school discussions, there's plenty of other things we could be doing than waste the time with this.
Right.
So.
I mean, I guess the, I guess the response to that is, the legislative, you know, there's a special town meeting that authorized this, the legislature put their stamp on it, and there's, there's tax value involved in terms of that benefit to the town.
Sixty-two thousand dollars in taxes is what, what I think I saw up there, right?
Yeah, on, on annual basis.
Yeah. Okay. I, trust me, I want revenue for the town, there's no doubt about that.
Right.
I'm just saying. More information, easy to make decision.
Sure. And that's part of why I'm here, so we can figure that part out and provide you with that information. We're happy to do it, we just wanna, you know, take, take the steps and move forward.
Part of the discussion, regardless of what the vote was in 2011, has been mentioned twice tonight already that, that we're gonna have to have a public hearing and a, and a, and another vote to convey the land. And, you know, in our public, in our public hearings and at our special town meetings and our town meetings, especially when you start talking about conveying land and changing things of a physical nature in town, people wanna see, to Terrence's point, what is it gonna look like? What's it gonna be? And, and what's it gonna be? Maybe a building, maybe some parking, maybe a little parking, maybe a little more parking, maybe a little less building. I mean, you think, that's not gonna fly. I don't know what town it does fly in. But I know with the folks that come in our town to vote for it, that, you know, they'll want those questions answered. And they should have a right to have that answered before they give up a piece of land that has a value to accept a piece of land that really doesn't have a lot of value other than it's pretty in the fall. You know, and it's nice for people to walk around, that have a desire to walk around in a vacant lot. But, you know, you'll need to provide the information that we're asking for prior to not just us making the decision, but you're gonna ask the town to make a decision based on a piece of paper that's nine years old or eight years old, that most of the people in there have never seen or heard and probably two-thirds of the people, you know, are, are not even the same people who are in town. So you're gonna need to provide the information.
Yeah, fair, we're willing to do it.
One of the, I guess the things that, that we have to be careful of too is, you know, industrial zoning. There's a heck of a lot of things that can go in an industrial zone. And so if we're thinking about what your client may want to put in there and you're reflecting to us tonight that it will be a building similar to this with X size, well, that's great if that happens. But your client may say, hey, this is great, and find out that there's a sale going on, that somebody else now wants that land and suddenly we've got a gas station.
Sure.
You know, whatever it may be, and I'm, I'm exaggerating, but.
Sure.
So it's the unintended consequences of doing something without the full understanding of really what the plan is long-term that is concerning. I, I'm not, I'm not shutting the door because I think that, that, that I wanna hear more. But I am, I am a little bit leery about the unintended consequences that we could then end up getting ourselves into a, a deal that we're not really that interested in in the grand scheme.
Right. But we very, we couldn't very well put a gas station there without getting approval.
No, I, that's why I said, that was an exaggeration. But industrial allow, and our industrial allows for a lot of different things.
No, there's no more comments we need, but, okay, so I guess.
So just to run a list of the things you, you folks wanna look at before, you know, before the next time we meet is, we want appraisal. before the next time we meet is, um, we want appraisals, right, so we understand the, the value of both pieces. Um, we want to have an butters list and notify the butters of the situation?
I don't know if that's necessary from my perspective until such time. I mean, we want to make sure that the butters are aware. That's probably the responsibility of the town or the media or whatever, to let, uh, people know that this is happening, because obviously that's not a requirement until there's a public hearing.
Yep.
To notify somebody. But I don't think, you know, personally, I did not know when I saw, uh, the, the agenda item, what we were actually going to be speaking about. And, you know, I certainly remember the town meeting vote from years ago, but, so, I don't know, from my perspective, notifying the butters is really something that I think now they're hearing about it, and now they should know, and the media will report it. But I don't know, you know, if you want to let them know that.
Yep.
That something's going on, that's being a good neighbor.
Sure.
Um, but that's just my perspective.
Okay. And we want, um, some architectural plans of, of a possible building that could go there.
Some understanding of what their plan might be.
Okay.
I think that's it.
I think that's it, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Andrew, you're up.
Can we also clean up the address up?
Yeah, that's, I'll take the hit on that one, I'm not sure where that came from, but it.
I didn't realize there was a 146 Acton Street, because if you look it up.
I was the one who created the agenda topic, so it must have been.
There's a parcel that comes up, too.
Yeah. That may have been why, I may have just picked the wrong parcel and typed it in. So the next topic is the draft controls. Uh, there's a number of, uh, controls to finalize the warrant, and then we need to actually finalize the warrant. So if you have any questions on the drafts being presented there, um, the free cash appropriation, you haven't seen yet the details of, it's an ever-changing, uh, list, but, uh, we have got it pretty close to nailed down right now. Um, authorization to fund, uh, to transfer funds from the redevelopment authority to the economic development committee is, uh, Control X. Control Z is appropriating the overlay surplus, that's part of the reason why the free cash number keeps changing, uh, because we're trying to pay off the snow and ice deficit, and that was our moving target. And then the assessors were kind enough to release a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of overlay, which enabled us to make some different decisions about free cash.
What's the deadline on accepting the controls?
Tonight.
Alright. Um, so if tonight's the night, and you have some margin comments, especially in Control W, uh, relative to we might want to cut this and move this there, um, we obviously would have to have that discussion, but then we can't change those numbers once tonight's vote goes through, or can we?
You can, the warrant's going to be printed on Thursday.
It'll have to be at town meeting floor where we do that.
Town meeting floor. The, uh, the intention for the free cash at this point, um, concludes the conversation late this afternoon with our DPW director. Um, but there is seven hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in free cash. If we use the overlay surplus for the full amount of it, a hundred and fifty thousand against the snow and ice deficit, that would leave us with a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars of snow and ice deficit, which would be the first item we would recommend using free cash for, to close that, that deficit to zero as required. After that, there's forty-nine thousand dollars proposed for the master plan, three hundred and sixty thousand for road and sidewalk construction, sixty thousand for the Fowler School air handlers, twenty-one thousand, I'm sorry, twenty thousand dollars for the fire department's power stretcher, and eighty thousand dollars for the Fowler field improvements.
Okay, that's, that's different than what I'm seeing on.
Understood. So I'm saying the numbers keep changing, I have another one as well.
That's, somewhat gets to the point that I wanted to make. I hope that in the future, um, when we start talking about free cash appropriations for town meeting, that we don't get the, a discussion like this to finalize these numbers. We should have had this discussion meetings ago.
With all due respect, we had a hundred thousand dollars or more of snow and ice costs in, in March.
I understand that, I understand that.
Leading up to this.
I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But that's a sort of a frustration that now we're.
I share it. Um, the Fowler field number, there was a request for a hundred thousand dollars, and the recommendation is to only fund eighty thousand of it. Uh, there's two reasons for that, one is the amount of money we had available, but also both the Fowler field proponents and the schools have indicated that they were, uh, willing to, uh, fundraise or find additional resources for it. Um, so that was, uh, part of the recommendation was, uh, based on the CPC's recommendation on what they were funding. The, um, the last piece is, uh, funding for OPEB. Uh, there's a request for fifty thousand dollars. There's also a request, uh, we heard about this earlier tonight, to, uh, appropriate, uh, money, uh, from the parking collections, uh, to refund money into the, um, downtown enhancement fund, which we call the BEP program. Um, so that could be split, either all of it into OPEB or all of it into the downtown enhancement, or some combination of the two. The only other number that I feel is, is variable there is the master plan. Originally, we had, uh, asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, last year was cut to seventy-five. We went out to bid, and we know the true cost right now is a hundred and twenty-four thousand, and that's why the request is for forty-nine thousand. Once the plan is done, there will undoubtedly be requests for implementation funds based on the plan, so that could be appropriated now or in the future.
You mentioned, excuse me for getting a bit confused here, but you mentioned OPEB, but OPEB's not listed on these lists of.
That's what I'm saying, this, this list has been changing as recently as this afternoon.
So where you're asking us to vote on a list that we don't even know what's on the list.
I can get it in front of you, but the, what we're asking to vote on.
I personally won't vote for something that I don't know what I'm voting for.
Fair enough. What we're asking for you is to put it on the warrant to be voted.
No, it's going to look like that.
So there's other details of the warrant articles you've approved in the past have changed and edited versions and so on as well. Uh, this is one example.
Not typically when.
Not, not this dramatically, I would acknowledge. The, um, let me see if I have the free cash on the thumb drive, and we'll put it up on the screen.
All right, let's, let's just come back to that, let's deal with the rest of them, so we can get them done.
So the only, the other ones that might need some, uh, real conversation are the sewer capital and water capital, uh, requests, and, uh, some of you may be aware of what's going on with our wells, we had a big presentation on it, uh, at our last meeting. Uh, the DPW, our engineering company, Stan Tech and VHB, are making these recommendations. It's been vetted through our finance department, uh, and they're recommending that we move money from capital already approved in the rates towards financing, so that they can do the sewer and water projects they need to do in the near term with existing funds.
Is that in one of the, one of the, um, articles, or one of the drafts?
Yeah, A, one that says A B sewer and A C sewer.
Alright, so those two.
A lot of money.
So there's a million dollars requested from sewer and nine hundred thousand from water, if I'm not mistaken.
Kind of a necessary evil though, based on that presentation we had.
Yeah. And neither of them are costing us more money in, uh, immediate rate changes or, uh, funding, it's coming out of the existing capital, just using it to leverage, uh, over several years instead of all at once.
Rob?
Is that going to include like DEP permit fees and stuff like that built into that for all the improvements we have to apply?
It's not on the draft.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know the answer to that question. The, um, permitting process with DEP is being expedited, and that's going to require some more information for this board in the next few weeks, uh, some of the details of that. But it will allow us to get well seven repaired in about a five to six month period. It was presented to you earlier this month that it would take, uh, probably until next January. Um, so the expedition, the expediting of that by the DEP was, uh, organized last week between DPW and DEP.
We have, I mean, we're not going to, the specifics will get done. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, um, I do.
So the, the, the number, free cash appropriation number total is not going to change. The specifics will change.
That's right.
We will have input into the specifics up until the time of town meeting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The, uh, in fact, if we had another snowstorm in April, we would be having this conversation again, and it's not beyond the realm of possibility, we, we did not use, uh, any snow and ice money for, uh, what came through Sunday night into Monday morning, but, uh, it wouldn't have been unreasonable for the, uh, crews to go out in salt and sand, uh, with what came in.
Okay. So I, I guess, um, my point is that typically what I would like to see is us have a discussion long before tonight where we prioritize our free cash items and say, here's how much, you know, whatever we're going to be getting, here are the items that we need to do, so that when we sit down and we know that, okay, now we have to take money out of the, uh, free cash to, uh, address some unforeseen snow and ice deficit issues, here are the rest of the items that we had already discussed and already talked about, which one of those we had prioritized in our discussion, well, that unfortunately now falls off the list or gets reduced in what we can fund. That should be the process that I think we should approach ourselves with, and I don't think we had that.
So at the, at the February budget meeting, the, um, town administration indicated they wanted somewhere just south of a half a million dollars for capital, and that was the free cash priority at that time. Uh, because of the overlay surplus released by the assessors office.
Mm-hmm.
We were able to move some of the snow and ice deficit there, increase some of the capital outlay, and then add in a few of these other items.
I get all the mechanisms that we did, but I'm just talking about relative to our free cash allocation, I, I think we should.
Well, I think David, you know, I'm not going to, I don't want you to interrupt you, but I think, just in order to move the thing, the discussion along, that we ought to, if we, you know, if we know that the number total is going to be seven ninety-three and whatever the, the changes.
Seven ninety-three, three thirty.
So if that's what the number is going to be, you know, we, we're voting in essentially to approve that number, but over the next.
Approving appropriation.
Between now and town meeting, it'll be, you know, we ought to consider, uh, consider just, you know, count on having that be an agenda item every meeting we have between now and then, to, to hammer that out, because.
Yeah, but the problem is, Chris, and I, I understand your point, the problem is we're going to be going to print with the warrant very soon, and if we do, then it becomes, you know, uh, you-know-what storm at town meeting if you're changing too many numbers with, within that particular warrant article, and I, that's, you know.
I, I understand, but I'm not, I'm not.
That's the, that's the problem.
Snowstorm.
No, we can move, we can move forward on allocating and approving the appropriation.
As long as the number is okay, I won't have a problem, you know, making an explanation as to what the individual line items are, as long as we are to write the same numbers. The number doesn't change off of seven ninety-three.
It will not change, it can't.
It can only go lower.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So as long as that's okay, I mean, I, you know, it, there's a reasonable explanation as to why, you know, on, maybe there's, you know, on April seventeenth, why we don't have those exact dollar amounts. I'm okay with having that explanation, but, at town meeting, but, you know.
Problem.
I understand your point, and I agree a hundred percent. It ought to be a discussion we have before.
Just, OPEB isn't even on this list yet, OPEB is.
So OPEB was one of the things that was off the list until the overlay surplus was released.
Okay, so.
Perhaps it should stay off the list.
Stayed off the list last year.
It was decreased last year.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Alright. So, okay, well, this, now this warrant says seven ninety-three, zero, 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 zero.
It does.
If there's free cash above that, I was not aware of it, that's the number that I've been using.
The Control W says seven ninety-three, three thirty-three, where are you looking?
That's, that's.
On the warrant itself.
The warrant itself.
I, I lost the three thirty-three in my math.
Yeah, so, okay.
I was doing all round numbers.
It's maybe seven ninety-three K, is what you're saying?
Seven ninety-three.
If we don't appropriate, appropriate it, the three thirty-three would return to undesignated fund balance and be part of next year's free cash.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so, do we need to do these individually, or we can do them as a group?
Can do them as a group.
Okay. Alright, so, I move to accept and approve draft Control W, draft Control X, draft Control Z, draft Control AA, draft Control AB, and draft Control AC. Is it a second?
Second.
I didn't miss anything, no, okay. Any further discussion about those six articles? No? All those in favor? Okay, so can we just make sure that that's an, an agenda item for the next several meetings before town meeting, so we get it to where we need it to be?
Absolutely.
In case other priorities pop up that we want to argue about between now and then. I can only imagine what it might be. I'm good with that, I'm good with that. Well, alright. So, review of the final warrants.
Oh, it's going to happen.
Move to accept and approve the final warrant for town meeting, Monday, May twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Who's proof, who's proofreading this bad boy, 'cause I don't want that lady getting up and correcting the English again this year.
Hey, she got it, come on. That's a rite of passage, man.
I am glad to move that.
I'll second it, by the way.
We have a couple sets of eyes on it.
Alright, no problem. Does anybody have any questions about the warrant in general?
No.
As it's, as it appears?
There's twenty-six items for this year, there's no special town meeting.
Okay, that's fine with me. So, uh, I'm sure Dick Downey will rev us all up and give us all our marching orders a couple days before. I don't know, is there anything, there's nothing controversial that would lead us to believe we're going to need the second room?
Huh.
How about that?
Um, I would say no.
I don't know, I'm just looking at the articles, and I don't see anything that would lead me to believe that there's going to be pitchforks and fire coming in the room. Is there ladies? Listen, I'm covering all my bases today, I don't want to get trouble anywhere.
I did see Mary Brantley at the hardware store recently.
I saw her. She's got a little doll with a Masters logo, she's hanging on a stick. Alright, well, so, I mean, yeah, we'll talk about that with Dick when the time comes, but, so, um, unless anyone has any questions, we can vote to approve the warrant as print, as suggested. All those in favor? Thank you. So, we all have your report, thank you very much. Some nice pictures in there, see me? I'm sorry. Anyways, it was nice.
Did you do it yourself this week?
Yep, it was nice, we had, we had our, um.
Picture Chairman De Silva with.
Yeah, so we have our, um.
Who's an ass, it's just not in your form this week.
Hey, hey, what's on my report now, his is over.
Oh, sorry.
So it was Andrew's, it was Andrew's report, but just so everybody knows, it didn't see Andrew's report, it was, it was a great, um, event we had at the golf course last Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I believe it was last Tuesday, in which we had Senator Eldridge, um, Senator, Congresswoman Songas, Representative Hogan, and we had Jen Benson, among others from the state, and a, a whole nother people from the state, um, delegation, and they're talking about the coming years, and thanking, um, Congresswoman Songas for her service, and Jamie even made a joke, so, it was a day. Did you see that one?
I have not.
You didn't see what he did?[1710.26] So, he's sitting there, this is for all you people that know Jamie Eldridge, so he's sitting in the room, and he's sitting on the left side of the table, and Senator, and Congresswoman Songus leaves, and he moved to the center. He said, you guys see that, you might never see it again. So, that's Jamie's joke, but anyway, so that was a great event, this is from my perspective as the chairman's report piece. Um, two other things, congratulations to several of the people, um, several, we had several people from the town mayor that, um, bared the terrible weather yesterday, and actually ran and completed the mar, marathon, so congratulations to all them, and I don't know if anybody else is aware, but unfortunately, sadly, my, my former golf partner, former First Lady of the United States passed away today, Barbara Bush, so that's a bad thing, but, other than that, I have to find a new golf partner. Anyways, that's it.
Have I been replaced?
She, you replaced her, that's right, she didn't show up. So, we're onto the other reports, and it's, uh, board member reports time. Melissa?
Um, I just wanted to remind people about the Spring Art Walk, it's the sixth annual on May fifth, on Saturday, um, hopefully people will show up and we'll have some great weather.
Hope so. Oh, yeah, the twenty, Sun, this Sunday is, um, the, the, um, Earth Day Walk, which starts, it's gonna start in the parking lot over here, move around down through, down the street, and drop some floats in the water.
It's on, uh, April twenty-second.
Yep, Sunday.
Is that coming up?
Sunday.
Yep. I think it's also the Little League Parade, which apparently we weren't invited to.
Are we not invited this year?
I don't think so, I don't-
Listen, it's just Sunday afternoon, I get to spend with my dogs.
I thought you were gonna do an Earth Day float.
Yeah, I wanna Earth Day float, all right.
Quick, uh, can we get an update on what's actually happening at 129 Parker right now? I know this thing's in motion, the fence has gone up, is there any synopsis that you or Bill or somebody can provide, so we can at least publish something?
Sure.
I'm not sure I can answer any questions right now, but what's happening?
No, a couple of quick notes on that. So, uh, we're waiting for the fence to be completed, it's like a month-long process, fifty, a fence around fifty-eight acres essentially, it's taken them a while, um, and dust, uh, controls, things like that, uh, before the building permits are issued, but for both the concrete care facility and the apartment, uh, buildings, most of the permitting process has been completed internally, and as soon as the fence is completed, um, those permits should be issued. Subsequent to that, they can start construction. In the meantime, the only construction that's happening is, um, utility work, basically underground work, they're trenching and so on for water pipes, that sort of thing. The town engineer, and the town planner, the building commissioner, uh, and the DPW director meet at least once a week, uh, sometimes it's just for five minutes, quick update, but to stay on top of what's going on and make sure everyone's in compliance. Once the building permits are issued, we've already agreed to hold a public meeting to update the public on schedules, which would be varying until the permits are actually issued. You know, the, the staging timelines and so on. So, probably early May, we'll hold a meeting for that.
Last, last question I have on that, actually, to, to humor me, is the, at the end of Acton Street on the right, next to the very nice townhouses that Benton built, there was a retaining pond there. Do we actually have rules for who's actually in charge of cleaning that?
If it's on private property, I believe the retention pond would be the responsibility of the homeowners association. I can get that verified.
We should find out, just because it is, I'm sure because everything thawed, but there's quite a bit of debris floating around inside that, it's pretty, and it's a very, very heavily trafficked area, now you can see it coming right down the rail trail, the rail trail is very busy out there, which is great, uh, but there's quite a bit of plastic and trash floating around in there, and there's a couple little ducks in there that can hang out there, so.
See what we can do about them as well, send them over to the golf course, that'd be all right?
Ducks are no promise, we don't like these. Mr. Gavin?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to first congratulate, uh, the, I was invited along with Kate Hogan and Senator Warren in her office to participate in one of the, uh, senior, uh, projects, uh, this one, particular one was by Kyle Morgan at the high school, and, um, so representative from, um, from Elizabeth Warren's office was there along with Kate and myself, and Kyle, as part, his senior project was about engagement in the political process from the town level up to the federal level, and he asked a series of questions to a number of, of students in the audience, and I wanna congratulate not only Kyle, but the entire group of kids that are doing their senior projects, um, because it was really, uh, the kids, the kids that were there were engaged and listening, they asked their own questions at the end of the, at the end of the session, um, the, you know, I enjoyed it, and I know Kate did, and, and the, uh, the representative from Elizabeth Warren's office certainly seemed to enjoy herself as well, um, but there's also, and I don't know if I'm violating any rules here, but, 'cause the school committee members are here, but, uh, I got an email about an opportunity to participate in, um, in, like, hearing these projects and then judging them and whatever, and I assume that that's open to the public, that anybody who wants to participate in that has the opportunity, and what a great opportunity to just go out, for anybody who's interested, to see what these kids are doing, to see how engaged they are in their projects, 'cause most of them choose something for which they may want to study in, in college, and, so, I would encourage all of us, if we have the opportunity, but more so, members of the public, to get out there and see what those kids are doing, because, um, like I say, Kyle's presentation really was good, and it was, you know, I thought there were gonna be softball, softball questions, and suddenly I'm getting these questions that are, that's sort of from, from out there, and I, I said that, I said, jeez, I thought there was gonna be easy questions, um, but it's, um, it's really something to see, and I hope that we can participate and give those kids our, you know, encouragement.
I just wanted to, um, follow up on that, because I've done it for the last two years, and it is, um, Friday, May eleventh, it starts after the luncheon, as part of Leading the Nation, and then, um, the only thing, again, Jim Lovell and Paul Borzek up at the high school are definitely looking for more people to participate, because just about all of the students this year, all of the high school students have to do a senior project, um, but they just need to have our, our C P from you, because then you actually get set up with two or three students that you, um, you watch, watched the presentation, and it's pretty amazing, it is really impressive.
I was very pleased to participate and honored to have been asked, so it was, it was really something, so that's it.
That's it. Sadly, I have to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Soviet.
Good night.
Thanks, Katie.